Call to order the Clermont Cultural Development Authority meeting. Sarah, please call the roll.
Codham here. Feldman.
Here.
Michael.
Present.
Calendar.
Here.
Long.
Present.
Bruckerhoff.
Here.
Bulby.
Here.
McSpadden.
Here.
Irwin.
Here.
If you'll stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Deputy Mayor McSpadden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President, please. Most gracious and holy Father, we thank you for this community in which we live. We thank you for the people who serve to protect us and keep us safe. We thank you for the leaders in this community who work to make a stronger, better, safer community all the way around. And I just pray for your wisdom and your guidance on this council as we make decisions for the best community we can be. In thy name we pray, in thy name.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thanks, sir.
Have any signed up for call to the public?
No.
Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
I am not used to that. Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Feldman.
Yes.
Codham.
Yikes.
Yikes.
That was.
Maybel.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
What was it coming through rail to hit our cars?
Let's see, they're stopped.
Any items unforeseen?
No.
Current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Bulby.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned second. Call the roll.
Calendar.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Call to order the Clermont Public Works Authority meeting. Note the roll. We have a motion to accept the agenda as printed. So moved. The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Feldman.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
No.
Current business, do we have a motion to accept the consent items as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Bulby.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Item number two, discussion of possible action on change order number one for Exodus Energy LLC as printed, Mr. Garrett Ball or Todd Root. Or both.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've got a kind of a closeout update a little later on on the agenda for this project. So this is a request to approve the change order, the closeout change order for the project. Basically, this reconciles final quantities. We did have some decreases, just some material quantities, and then the increases that we had were basically due to railroad delays from permitting and getting all that approved and getting the go-ahead from them. So in the end, it came out good. We had a $38,574, 74 cents decrease on this change order. So with that, we would recommend approval of the final change order. Motion approved.
Second.
The motion approved in second. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
Item number three, discussion of possible action to award the construction contract to, for the annual overhead electric unit price contract, contract done twice, to Southern Electric Corporation of Mississippi for fiscal year 2025-26. Mr. Ball.
Real quick, if I may, Garrett, because I don't know that we've, we've told the council we had a large project that we were putting in in the public, about $3 million. So we're, we update you fully. The approach we're taking on that is finding and identifying everything that we might possibly use for these types of projects going forward and then putting a bid packet together that essentially creates a line item for each of the things that we might use. And then where we provide the material and the labor comes in and does the project. So it says annual, but it's basically inaugural. It's not going to be all that uncommon. We'd like to turn this into something like our street rehabilitation project, but you're going to see this presented like you would an annual asphalt rock or concrete quote or bid. Todd's crews in the electric department use so many consumables, from wire to insulators to poles to guy wires, to name it. So that's the approach we're taking. It's for this project specifically up north, the reconducting going up to Sequoia, that $3 million project. But we're doing it this way so we can every year have an idea of what we're going to need to do to follow through on CEC's recommendation. So this is a little different and unique how we did it, but it is for that $3 million project we approved in the budget.
So essentially what this is, like John was saying, we bid out line items for anything that we could imagine that would be needed for overhead electric construction. We've got two bids. They were open on the seventh of October. They were real close bids. Both bids were responsive. Essentially, what we did to compare the bids was we, we put three different mock work orders into the spreadsheet. Then we got the numbers all sorted out and comparing those two contractors with their unit prices, what we came out with is shown in the agenda packet here. So at the end, the V and E power bid was a little bit cheaper on the very, very small project. The midsize or mid-range project, half a million to a million, Southern Electric came in lower. And then as you get up in the 1 million plus range, we plugged in about a $2 million project. Southern Electric came in quite a bit cheaper on that, that project. So with that, we're going to recommend approval of the annual contract for this fiscal year with Southern Electric. And based on their references that they provided, and I think Todd did contact some of their preferences that they provided, based on that and their previous work history that they, they showed in their bid packet, they're more than qualified to do, do about anything that we need them to do. So.
We haven't had to use them or anything.
We, we haven't ever, I think we've ever actually used them. They, they do a lot of work in the local area for PSO and some other.
So the prices in line with what you were expecting?
Yes, I would say so. Would you?
I had a couple of questions. Sorry. So my understanding is that this is not completely unique. There's other municipalities who use the same process, so.
And, and a little better explanation of what, what will happen going forward. So once this contract's approved, then we'll come up with some design drawings. We'll sit down with the, with the contractor and Todd and we'll come to an agreement on what units within their bid we want to use to build that project. We'll come up with a work order. We'll bring that work order back to this board for approval. And once that's executed, they'll have to provide payment, performance of maintenance bonds, and at that point, they can start working.
Yes.
If for some reason we come up within this fiscal year with another $1 million project that we need to do, we can, we can go to them and come up with another work order. We don't have to go back to this bid process again for this fiscal year.
They'll save a lot of time on, on your.
A lot of administrative time.
Okay. Thank you.
So we don't have to renew it annually?
Yes, if.
If you come to agree on terms?
Yeah. If the, if the contractor agrees to, to honor their prices through the next fiscal year, then we have the opportunity to extend it for another year.
Any other questions?
Second.
The motion is second. Call the roll.
Irwin.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned second. Call the roll.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Call to order the Clermont City Council meeting. Note the roll. We have a motion to accept the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Bruckerhoff.
Yes.
Bulby.
Yes.
McSpadden.
Yes.
Irwin.
Yes.
Codham.
Yes.
Feldman.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Calendar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Any items unforeseen?
No.
Mayor's report, just want to say it's nice to have our senior manager back.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Mr. Brown is just as happy to have him back as well.
Just glad he was still here.
Yeah, it's only, yeah, it's awesome to have someone in place so that it doesn't become, you know, messy, but Stan steps in, he does his job, and then when he's back, John's right back at it. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And Stan, thank you for that. Words and presentations and communications, Mr. Manager.
Real quick, I normally would do these under staff reports, but we've got some, some updates we want to give you. One, to ride, to, to follow up what you just said. Grateful to the staff, the senior directors, as well as Stan. For the first time in a long, long time, I was able to truly step away and unplug. And so it was much needed. It was a great, it was a great trip, a great experience. I'm very thankful for that. And I'm thankful to you all for allowing us to have that time to do those things and kind of catch up as a husband and wife. So it, it was, it was really nice. And so Stan did an amazing job, but we just have a staff here. I'm so comforted of the fact that no one, God forbid, something happened and he had to step away. There's Sarah, and God forbid something happened, but there's Susan, and then there's Tim. So we really have built this team that we, we don't miss a beat. And we're here to serve the public, and we're going to continue to operate that way. So I'm grateful for them and to you all. More somber note, need to pass on to you all that yesterday Kathy Perry, Jennifer's mom and Mickey's wife passed away. I know that they had been dealing with some stuff for a while. So if you would keep the Jennifer and the family and your thoughts and prayers, and as soon as we know details on anything, we'll make sure you have it. And we, of course, will, as always, will send something on behalf of the council and the staff, and we'll let you know. But Jennifer served valiantly for four years, and we all know what her father's impact on this community was. And anytime somebody in that position serves, their spouse is also serving. And so we're grateful to the Perry family for that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Staff reports, Mr. Manager.
All right. Garrett's going to come back up and brief us a little more on, he just talked about a change order, about a big, this is his favorite. I said, look, if you're going to get all dressed up, you're going to have to do it all in one meeting.
I will probably quit.
Hey, it's all good. It's all good.
Baker Hughes. Okay, so this is the frozen, the closeout presentation for this project. This is the one that we just approved the change order on to close it out. So this project basically took power from the existing substation there at Baker Hughes across 66 to the other Baker Hughes facility, which will remove them from the city's grid and free up some capacity on our side.
Gary, are you able to start the show under slideshow?
Well, you know, the thing is, is I don't have a screen here that shows it.
Oh. Oh, you can't see the mouse?
No, I can't even see it.
Okay, okay. You're almost right. Okay. Okay, now, now go, there you go. All right. T-word makes the dream work. All right, that's, that's technology here at the Clermont City Council Chamber Association. It's actually touchscreen. No, it's not.
So that shows the route of the project. Came out of that existing substation there behind Baker Hughes, came out to Stewart Russe, had to cross the highway and the railroad tracks, and then went north to the bank and tied it, tied back into existing infrastructure there. So the contractor on this project was Exodus Energy. We did have some work from the CEC Corporation, the flexible consultant that we've got in our contract. They did some of the design work on it. We did some work in-house on the project, project management inspection, contract administration, and the construction station for the work. Todd and his crew.
Sorry.
Oh, you're good. Todd and his crew, they did the.
Back one more, Gary, please.
They're working on, on installing the wire, the conductors, and doing the overhead installation and all the, the termination of the project. So they had a big part in the project as well. So funding is through the CPWA Enterprise Fund. Started design in June of '23. Design and permitting cost is $117,000. The bid was awarded in October of '24 for roughly a million dollars. That's, that's just the construction contract itself. Change order number one, final deduct was approved earlier this evening, $38,500. The material cost on our side, wire and miscellaneous, was about $345,000. So the total project cost was right at 1.4 million. I think we'd budgeted 1.7. So we've done, done pretty well on that. Estimated savings on the city side engineering and electric part was about $450,000 that we've got in, so. Just, just some pictures of the, the project. Kind of see the majority of the installation that the contractor did was three to four polyethylene six-inch casing pipes, and they directional bored about 90% of that in. So that kind of helped minimize disruptions and just more of the project photos. There's the board across 66 in the railroad. Doesn't, doesn't look like much, but that's about 13, 14 feet deep.
And each, each one of those was how long, the casing?
Uh, it was 300 feet.
Yeah, 300 feet casing.
And just some file cleanup photos. Todd's crew's still working to finish all the wiring, all the terminations finished, but should be done pretty quick.
Garrett, when you say it'll free up for us, do you know how much it's freeing up?
I don't know how much.
Todd.
Todd's such a speaker, so.
Um, it'll free up a circuit, so roughly, I don't know, 600 primary amps, enough if we had to run quarter of the town probably.
That's nice. It's awesome.
So when, substation five of the Baker Hughes, there are two 25-megawatt transformers there. With doing this project and putting EDC cabling over there on that, they're going to use five or six?
Six, seven.
Six or seven megawatts. So we now have an opportunity, some of that redundancy, we've been, we've never had an avenue to get that power back across into the community, and now we do. So we added a considerable amount of, now, it's still obligated to them. They, you know, that was a TIF, and however, if we need it, there's a way to get it. And they understand that that's absolutely why we, that's a lot of unused, not that they're using, but that's a lot of capacity that could be needed in, in a situation where we have an emergency or for this project that we're working on with CEC. And we did this because they're going to expand pretty rapidly at their cabling plant. They're very busy, and this allows Todd to make some other arrangements with narrowing up and doing some circuitry work that feeds the industrial park and that takes that load that's on this side of 66 and puts it over there, so that frees up a bunch. So this was a kind of a win-win for them, for us, allows them to expand and grow, and allows us to have access to additional needs.
So again, project's finished. As typical, the only issue that we have is railroad.
Even we're going under them, it's a problem. How much of the permitting, what was the permit cost just to go under?
I'm going to say permitting and the delays that were caused, remobilization from the contractor, probably around $50,000, $60,000.
And there's nothing we can do about it.
Okay.
Just wait on them, so. But it's a great project, and as usual, Todd's guys and Garrett and our, did a great job.
The benefit far, far outweighs the cost.
Let's talk about sewer. Do you need, do you need me to direct again, Garrett?
I, which one is it?
There you go. You're on it.
You got it. So this project is the gravity sewer improvement project that we just finished up, and we'll have a change, a closeout change order on it a little bit later, go to the next one. So these are the areas, the green highlighted areas are the segments of line that we replaced. Some really, really bad shade sanitary sewer, gravity sewer that was in desperate need.
You didn't take pictures on it.
Yeah, we, we.
We have photos, but we're not showing you.
So the contractor on this was Horseshoe Construction.
Turn your lights, sir.
A group out of Texas, done an excellent job. My guys really liked working with them. They done, they done a great job on the project. This is the first time we've worked with them, so sometimes you never know what you're going to get, but these, these guys knew what they were doing and done a great job. So we done all the design surveying in-house, the project management inspection, contract admin, even quite a bit of CCTV inspection. The Community Development Department, Andrew and his folks, they, they done all the grant management on the CDVG side. And then Jonas' folks, they helped with the line clearing and the CCTV inspection. So had a, had a lot of help internally on the project to make it a success. So funding's through the 2023 CDVG Small City Grant Program. That's a bi, a bi-yearly grant that up to this point, we've basically been guaranteed a certain amount every two years. Not sure what the future of that's looking like right now, but so far, it's, it's been a great project, and we utilize that funding well. So we just, we started a design on this project in March of '23. The bid was ordered in April of '24. Contract amount was $520,000, and the final deduct change order will be $11,734. The total project cost is about $510,000, and I'm estimating that we saved about $220,000 with the, the in-house work that we done on the project. There's your pictures of what, what we were dealing with to start with. It, it's difficult to even get a camera through a lot of this stuff, so. All right, some of this piping's completely collapsed, and the picture on the right there, you see, that's just severe root intrusion, and that's not the worst of it.
Yeah.
Keep going. And this is very common on clay tile line that's been in the ground for 50-plus years. And every place you see a crack like that, that's, that's a place the groundwater's getting in the sewer and affecting our capacity at the wastewater plant. And this one, this is kind of a one-off on this project. This was over on the west side of town. This was a manhole that had a forced main from a lift station discharging into it. And basically what you're seeing there is what was left of the manhole when they got it dug up. There was no.
It was just a hole at that point. It was just a hole at that point.
Dirt was the only.
Dirt was what was keeping it together.
Because when that forced main discharges, it generates the hydrogen sulfide gas, and that eats the concrete up if it's not protected, so. So the results of the project, we got twenty-two hundred feet of gravity sewer rehab. Two manholes replaced, eleven manholes rehabbed, one manhole rehabbed, fifty-two service taps replaced, and twenty-seven point repairs completed. This is that same manhole as their replacement. And this is just some of the other project pictures. So most of the work that was done was pipe bursting. And any of y'all that aren't familiar, basically what you do is, there's a couple different methods you can do it, but you take a a high-density polyethylene liner pipe, and you pull it through that clay tile, and it just breaks the clay tile, but it gives it somewhere to pull that new pipe in. The picture on the right there, that shows them pulling the pipe through. A picture of the manhole rehab there on the right. The crew that they brought in to do that done a really good job as well.
So that kind of like in the middle of town? Or how was it?
Most of this is in the middle of town.
So the CDBG stuff is based on eligibility and census tract data and income and socioeconomic consideration. So there's only certain parts of area that qualify.
This is the CCTV footage of some of those same lines after we were finished pipe bursting with them.
Looks nice.
Much better than what we had.
So only certain areas of Claymore can you utilize that great money?
Yeah, it's based on census tract information. And I think it's important, as Garrett starts to wrap up, this was twenty-two hundred linear feet, and you saw the number of manholes. For those of you that were here and saw the pretty comprehensive presentation a few weeks back on the overall sanitary sewer master, you can see why it's just a few things and some plant upgrades are close to a hundred million dollars. I've said, and we've said for the better part of a year and going into the town hall meetings, that while we all like to talk about transportation, electricity, my number-one concern right now for this community is our sanitary sewer collection system. Because some of that stuff that we just replaced was only replaced because it was accessible to this programming. We had that all over town. And you can see what kind of issues that it will cause, not maybe, it is and will cause. We have to find ways to address the millions upon millions of dollars needed in our sanitary sewer collection system. And we'll continue to work towards that, just like we do with everything else. Because we can put temporary electric line on top of the ground for a while, can't do that with sewer.
This project was definitely a success. Some of the worst gravity sewer segments got replaced. We stretched the funding out as far as we could to make the biggest impact. Inflow infiltration, every time we do one of these projects, it decreases the INI that goes to the sewer plant. We've got situations where before, that's not not one of the public's favorite things, because a lot of times, the sanitary sewer works as a French drain for people's backyards or front yards and.
Or swimming pools.
Yeah, once you go through and replace this, that French drain goes away, and then they have water issues that should have been there all along. Potential for residential backups decreases anytime you do one of these kind of replacements. And in turn, that decreases our torque claims and all of the types of liability that we got, so. Citizen complaints on this project, I might have got two or three on the whole project, so. The guys done a great job working with the public and the citizens that were affected. And this one was on schedule and under budget. We did not have to deal with the road.
Good job.
And last but not least, for you, it's going, I thought it was time that you all had a pretty comprehensive update on the water treatment plant upgrade. That is an extensive twenty-seven-plus-million-dollar project. And it's been a while since they've really had a, here's where we're at. And we thought it was time to let you and the public know, here's where we're at. Again, I want to note that our crews are doing a lot of work on this, just to keep costs manageable and low. You know, we delayed the project about two years, and went from nineteen million to twenty-seven million. And even then, when we went out and got aggressive and bid it, it had gone to about thirty-one million. So we said, what can we do internally to save that money? But they're making great headway and cooking along pretty good.
Yeah, we're, at this point, we're past the halfway mark, so.
You're on it, Gary. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. So the purpose of this project was to improve the water quality produced at the water plant in two ways. Improve the organic removal of the water, as well as decrease the manganese or increase the manganese removal in the water. So that's the two main goals. Design builder on the project is Burns McDonald Engineering, who some of you may not know, designed the original water system in the city of Claymore, which is pretty impressive that they're still around a hundred-plus years later. Funding for this, or funding for this project was provided through the FAP loan program through OWRB. Contract amount was twenty-eight million. Executed the contract in August of twenty-three. Issued the motion proceeding on April first. Contract completion date is currently October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-six. So to date, contract amendment number one approved on February third, twenty-twenty-five. That was what John was talking about earlier. We've done some value engineering. Burns McDonald done a lot of that to figure out what we could do to get that cost back down to where our loan amount was. And with that, we ended up actually doing a decrease contract amendment from twenty-eight million to twenty-seven point six-six. And that did increase the contract age from five sixty to a thousand eighty-five. So that was due to the labor bids coming in over budget. So a lot of the real expensive items, such as the decant line that drains the lagoons back to the lake. We're doing a reroute on that to the creek, so that we're not recycling the manganese water back into the lake, so we don't have that cycle back into the lake. We just continue fighting it. That's one of the projects that we're doing in-house. We also had to modify those lagoons, raise the dikes on, get some additional capacity. The demolition work on the existing buildings. And there were some other smaller things we did in-house. We're probably thirty days wrapping those up, so I'm hoping I can get my crew out of there and move in on some other projects. So current work completed by the design builder, sixteen million. Current amount that we've paid out is about fourteen point three million. That gets us well over halfway on the contract. The city work that we've done so far, keep in mind, this is just material that, material rental, that kind of thing, that's not related to anything like that. Is two hundred and thirty-one thousand. And based on what we ran into on rock excavation, anybody that's been by Blue Star seen the kind of rock that we've been digging in, that part of the project by itself could have been easily a million plus, so. Owner allowances are built into this design build contract, so that's just things that come up that we can take care of in the field with an authorization. We don't have to do a change order until that's exhausted. We have to come back and do a change order for that, so. The original amount of the allowance was four hundred and thirty-four thousand. Three hundred and fifty thousand, that has been used so far, so we've got eighty-three thousand remaining. Go to the next one. So authorization number one, two hundred and thirty-six thousand of that, which is the biggest one of all of them. That was for the material for that decant line that we're currently putting in, so. That wasn't really an unforeseen, that money had to come from somewhere, so the design builder went ahead and bought the material for that. So that didn't come out of that when we did the contract amendment. Authorization number two is just some unforeseen demolition that was associated with that big white lime silo that stuck out of the building for the last fifty years. It's finally gone now. Authorization number three, that was additional masonry work. When they removed that lime silo, the original plan was just to patch the roof. They got into some asbestos that had to be evaded, and then some structural issues were found with the roof. So that building has basically got a new roof now, and.
And asbestos-free new roof.
And then authorization number four was just some piping modifications and a new scale that had to be blocked for that permanganate building. It was kind of a rehab project within itself. So scheduled, currently expected substantial completion date is July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-six. And the expected final completion date is September twenty-second. So we're less than a year away. So one of the main things that this project is doing is adding green sand filtration. That is a secondary redundant to remove manganese from the water, which is what's caused a lot of our discoloration issues over the years. So currently, the buildings, this was an existing building, actually, those two buildings were existing buildings that were on the site where the new green sand building is going, those have been demoed. The below-grade piping and a lot of the concrete work's already complete, so that building should start coming out of the ground pretty quick. The big round tanks that you see out there, those are the green sand pressure filter vessels. So those will be attached to that building. That's where the green sand will be placed, and that's where it will filter the water. That's just more pictures of the green sand building, the one on the left is the demo. We got into the demo on those buildings, and they were some kind of sludge dewatering facilities way back when. And they had massive footings under them. We spent weeks and weeks hammering footings out, and like, never got those broke out, but we finally did, so. The one on the right, that's the footings for that building coming out of the ground. And then there's what the new footprint of the green sand building will look like. Just some of the piping and conduit that goes into that kind of facility. And these are some new chemical storage facilities, one building, and I think two other pads. So these additional chemicals are part of the organic removal that will go into treating the water to get the organics out of the out of the water better. So containment structures are on the left, and then that's the, I think that's the new CO2 building there on the right. And then this is the lime silo removal that was in the east plant. You can see it sticking up there on that picture on the left. They had to basically take it out a piece at a time. And when they got it out, they found that part of the wall on that building was about to fall out. So that required some additional masonry work, and then they got into the roof, and that's where that went. Some more pictures of that repaired. They've done a real good job. That building's going to be a lot better shape for a long time. So this is some of the pictures from the decant line. This is where we started down by Dog Creek. That hole you're looking at there with the shoring unit is about nineteen foot deep.
And these are our guys doing that work.
So moving forward, schedule's looking good. Contractor safety has been excellent out there. Cannot brag on those guys enough. They have been great on safety. Project management team's been great to work with. Work quality has been excellent. Everything so far, we're within budget, but allowance funding is low. I'm not, we're looking at some other value engineering stuff that is probably not needed, that we might build a cutout that's going to help build that allowance number backup. Overall, the design build process has been really efficient, and we really enjoyed working with the contractor, all of the subcontractor projects at work.
And this is, if you recall, this is, we're kind of the beta testing with DEQ on this type of construction on the design build and the project management side. And it's gone very well. They're kind of monitoring us and looking at us to see how they can make it easier for other communities to do something similar. Because it allows us to find and identify and execute on the savings side and do some things that you don't typically get with your kind of, you know, your GC-style bid build deal. The stipulation with this type of funding through OWRB is that I think the project requirement was to be done by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six, so we're obviously well on schedule there. And then Susan Malloy and the finance department have done some amazing things here recently. This is a pretty hefty, you know, monthly payback. It's not inexpensive when you borrow twenty-eight million dollars. And we've had, been really fortunate with how we've handled the interest. And there were some things that Susan was able to work out and capitalize on then to interest to credit back towards the payment. So we just recently reduced our payments from about one thirty-five a month down to about sixty-five thousand a month, based on the interest that we've accrued since they deposited the money. And it used to be you couldn't do that, and then we worked with the state, and we got that squared away, so that's always a good thing. So Susan's always doing a great job making sure we're staying on top of everything, too. So we're very grateful for that. But this is not an easy undertaking, and it takes up a lot of time for Garrett, Jonah, and the staff. And I have to brag on Infomark, who's our contractor that is operating the plant. And, you know, there's always a little sense of here, we know this is needed, it's never not going to be needed. As most of you know, every single year, we deal with discoloration and manganese. For this last year, we didn't have one single notice violation. We didn't have one single instance of discoloration. You're like, did we need to spend twenty-eight? But it's a fluke deal. It's the exception, not the rule. So we didn't have the heat that we normally do. We didn't have the type of turnover in the water that we did, so.
And manganese is seen to be regulated.
Absolutely, a hundred percent. If we would have waited, and I think that's going to, when they go through all their comment period and DEQ are a couple years out, if we'd have waited until it was absolutely regulated, this twenty-eight million would have cost us thirty-eight or forty-two or something. So it's like every other project we do, the longer we wait to do it, the more expensive it gets. We're ahead of the curve, and when DEQ and EPA are on everybody else's case, we've already got it done, so. So great job to you. And I'm sorry if you guys have any questions, obviously for Garrett, but it's a big project, that it's a project that needed to be done.
So if I remember correctly, this doesn't increase our water capacity, this improves the water quality.
That's correct. And again, the first, back in twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, when they started talking about the increase on the capacity that was commissioned and started in twenty eighteen, originally, they looked at, and that project was eighteen million at the time, I want to say. They looked then at capacity and quality, and it was about a forty-million-dollar price tag. So we're honestly, surprisingly, still on about a forty, well, fifty. So we're honestly, surprisingly, still on about a 40, well, 50 million now with 18 and 28, but, so you can just see how much that price went up just in that, you know, five or six years.
Any other comments or questions? Current business, do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed?
Motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Call the roll.
Bellman?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Discussion possible action on resolution number 2025-14, selecting to use the same engineering firm as Rogers County to complete the city bridge inspections from April 1st, 2026 to March 31st, 2028. Mr. Ball?
We might as well just get him a stool.
Yeah.
She just sat up there.
A chair.
You want to sit here, I'll go out there.
Okay, so real quick, this is a, something we have to do every two years. The federal government pays for city bridge inspections through OWRB every two years. The last time that we've done this, or actually the last two times we've done this, we selected the same engineering firm that the county uses. That's a lot simpler process than the alternative of going through the RFQ process and doing that on our own. The first time we did it, we actually selected the same engineering firm as the county. So this just cuts us that out. The county used the same firm for the last 15, 20 years probably. And they've done a really good job, so our recommendation is to utilize the same firm as Rogers County and adopt this resolution stating that.
Motion to approve.
Motion proven second, any discussion? Call the roll.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Discussion impossible action on change order number one for horseshoe construction as printed, Mr. Ball?
My last one for the night. So this is the project that we talked about earlier, the sanitary sewer project. This is just reconciliation of the final quantities on the project. There was really nothing, nothing that stood out here. We had the project contingency that were taken out. That was a $20,000 deduct and then the other final quantities, just the miscellaneous stuff, that was an increase of $8,000. So with that, we would recommend approval of change order number one.
Motion to approve.
Motion proven second, any questions? Call the roll.
Callender?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Michael?
Discussion impossible action on number 2025-18, requesting a zoning change as printed, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. Ferry. I want to keep it brief. This particular zoning change is very similar to the last few that you guys have seen. It speaks directly into the comprehensive plan about neighborhood conservation, allowing, you know, neighborhoods to be kind of organically changed over time. And that's exactly what this zoning change is attempting to do. It's attempting to lean into that definition. At the planning commission meeting on October 7th, 2025, they voted unanimously to approve this zoning change and we received no comment from the public. Over the course of the public notice process, as a result of that, considering all these factors, we did recommend approval of the project.
Motion to approve.
Motion proven second, any other discussion? Call the roll.
Bellman?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Discussion impossible action on declaring the following items as surplus and authorizing the sale of said items. Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. In the policy, it reads that we, anything over $12,000 that we're going to sell, it needs your guys' approval. And this is a list of, the biggest part of it was the sanitation trucks. Most of the time, we don't have anything that's that, you know, that valuable, per se. But this is...
What do you want for that '87 Chevy? No, I'm kidding. I am so kidding. That's probably the most reliable truck in the whole fleet. Yeah, it's Joe Casey's. Joe's finally getting a new truck.
I know he'll keep his forever.
I appreciate, this is Jonathan's first time up and so it's always a, it's always a kind of a fun tame to initiate. He is doing a great job for us over at Fleet. Because of the way our policy is and we're a public body council, where we go with that is, we will put these out through a site, either open gov or...
Yeah, gov deals.
Gov deals. And so the public has the ability to, so they'll basically handle everything for us and at the end of the day, they remit us back the dollars. So we're very thoughtful in what we keep and what we get rid of. And John has done an outstanding job of coming through and saying, yeah, we've got this and it runs, but we're spending $3,000 a year to maintain it and it's worth $1,200. And so, you know, and all of this also coincides with what we're doing, moving towards the enterprise, the Fleet system and going forward. So there are some rather large trucks on here that we'll no longer be using through that commercial refuse, this avowment that we started and some other things. So typically, he's right, we don't, this stuff doesn't really come to you because it's all, we don't have anything that's worth any money. Because we use it until it's basically worthless. But I think those trucks will probably bring some, they're desirable and they'll get them cheaper than they, and they'll still bring six, high six figures.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a few trucks will do it.
Do we have a second? Motion to approve in a second, any other discussion? Call the roll.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Callender?
Yes.
Didn't real, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned second.
Callender?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Bruckerhoff?
Yes.
Falby?
Yes.
McSpadden?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Where adjourned?